Okay, so Mr. Donald R. Baker served Avery County as the manager from 1996 to 2002. He retired from Louisville Craig College in 94 after 34 years of service. He served as president of the Avery County Chamber of Commerce in 1984, was on the Region D Council of Governments, was named outstanding local government manager of Region D in 2000, 2001, was a board member of Avery County Community Foundation from 2005 to 2010, was recognized by Certificate of Appreciation by Governor Jim Hunt in recognition of dedication and outstanding service to North Carolina, and he served the county GOP as chair from 2003 to 2018. So we, at this time, just in memory of Don and his service to the county, we just ask for a moment of silence.
A little silence by our head.
Okay, thank you.
All right. As long as, stand and do our pledge to our American flag. Woody, would you please plead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. You know, it seems funny to be up here today, we've been that car for over a year, six foot apart, but I'm glad we can do this. And, Mr. Barrier, do you have any proclamations or awards?
We do not.
We're gonna have a lot of them for long when we get through doing these COVID shots, COVID tests, and all the good workers that we've had to help us through the county. Ms. Cindy, do you have any write-ins or anybody here that wants to speak in public comments?
I think Dr. Boyd does.
All right, Dr. Boyd, come.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to just do a, just a quick thing on our budget request this year so that we kind of give a background on it. We have asked for an additional $20,000 in our operating and maintenance, mostly because of increases in insurance and utilities, but we've also, if we get to full mounts from each county, then we'll be able to also add armed security from eight to five, both for the main campus and for the early college. And so, I met with the three sheriffs last week, and we talked about, they originally talked about a proposal a while back that was a lot more expensive, we just went straight to, straight to the, to chase and come up with something that would be reasonable for us to be able to do. And the three sheriffs made a recommendation and agreed to the recommendation, and then Avery Sheriff would supply radio so we had communications with Avery Sheriff's Department. And then, on the Capitol, we left the same request, and our primary thing this year is to, is to completely, is to redo the fire training center so it's usable again. It has been usable in a few years, and we really need to get that fire center going again. So that was our thing. I hope you got the video that we sent out to everybody on, to update on the college and all the things that we've done, or are in the process of doing. We gave the three county managers a little tour the other day, the nickel tour, that's all Phillips said he could afford, and so, but things are moving good, and we're still shooting hard to have the hotel open next month.
Dr. Boyd, if you would, would you tell the board how our maiden rating?
We just came out again, of course, we've been ranked high over the last eight years, and most recently, about a month ago, we came out as number 23 in the nation out of over 1,100 community colleges evaluated. But the thing I liked the most about that rating was when you dug into it, we were number one in workforce credentials, and that's really what we're there for. And so, being number one, being number one out of 1,100, or 11, yeah, 1,100 community colleges is, workforce credentials is pretty good, so we're very proud of that. So thank you for asking.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak in public comments? If not, we'll move right along to 3.2C, review of the planning board applications and the jury commission applications.
Yep. So board, these are for review for this month. For the jury commission, you have Linda Alice Taylor, and for the planning board, you have three positions open, and the candidates are Anna Trivet, William Kyle Wise, Michael M. Lacy, Cheryl Buchanan, Michael Smith, Rachel Deal, Bill Close, and Tonya Erno.
All right.
So those can be voted on next month.
We have those to review, and we think those that put in the application. All right, we'll move right along to 3.3, Oasis Update. Sydney Harris, come forward, please.
Hello, I'm actually Sarah Crouch, I'm the outreach coordinator for Oasis. I'll be speaking today, this is my co- referee Sydney, she's our Avery Services Coordinator. So as I mentioned, I'm the outreach coordinator for Oasis. As you may know, Oasis stands for opposing abuse with service, information, and shelter. We serve survivors of intimate partner violence, sexual violence, and sex trafficking. We're currently the only agency in Avery County that provides those types of services for survivors of domestic violence and sexual violence in Avery County. And some of the services that we provide include a free and confidential emergency shelter. Again, that is the only emergency shelter program in this county. In addition to the shelter program, we offer other housing programs, so permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, and we have a few different apartments and opportunities for that. In this county specifically, we recently received a new grant, actually, that is going to expand our ability to serve survivors in Avery County so that we can keep people in Avery and not have to shuffle them around to other counties in order to receive the services that they require, so we're incredibly excited about that. Some other services that we offer outside of housing include our crisis support services, which includes a 24/7 crisis line and some counseling opportunities. We provide medical advocacy and judicial systems advocacy in conjunction with legal aid. We offer community education and outreach and prevention programming, and a lot of the local middle schools and high schools are incredibly hopeful that we may be able to provide some prevention programming for Avery County students soon. In addition to that, we work really closely with High Country Community Health and Rams Rack to continue to provide services. If we're not able to meet a specific need, we know that our community partners can. For High Country Community Health, we've partnered with them to provide people with physical health care, mental health care, and dental care, and that was a very exciting new grant opportunity we received. We're here for two reasons today. First, April is Sexual Thought Awareness Month, so all month long, you'll see us hopefully wearing these teal ribbons like Sydney and I both have on, and just raising awareness about sexual violence, which is something that unfortunately happens in every community in the United States. So we'll just continue to raise that awareness. And a big reason why raising awareness and educating the public about this is so important is because there's a huge amount of stigma that surrounds sexual violence. We know that there are, you know, one in three women and one in six men who report experiencing sexual violence. Again, that is just reported, so we know that if there was a reduction in stigma, those reports would likely go up and people would receive the services they need to continue living a happy and healthy life. So, raising awareness is a great opportunity for us to reduce stigma, which can improve the services that agencies like Oasis provide, which will in turn make our communities healthier, happier, stronger, and more resilient, which is the ultimate goal. So, in fiscal year 2019, 2020, Oasis served 102 victims of sexual and domestic violence in Avery County alone. That leads me to the second reason we're here, we did request $5,000 from the county commissioners. I'm hopeful that we will receive that $5,000 as it will help us provide the only free and confidential services for victims of sexual violence and domestic violence in this county. Happy to take any questions, if not, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. All right, we'll move right along to 3.3B, 2021 North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Facility Needs Survey, Jeffrey James.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening, board.
Good afternoon.
Some of you may recall that have been on the commission for a while. Every five years, the Board of Education is required to submit to the State Department a facility needs survey, of which we have to present to both the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, just to make you aware of what facility needs are out there over the next five to 10 years, as we see at the present time. Based on the information that we collected, and it was an extensive process, I provided the commission with a copy of the reports that we had to submit to Raleigh. We did this five years ago, and when they came out back in the fall, I thought, okay, well, it'll just be a simple process, I'll take what I did five years ago, change a few things, look at where we are, make some updates. They completely overhauled the reporting system, and there's a lot of data that we had to go out and collect that we didn't have readily available, but it's good data to have, and hopefully, over the next five to 10 years, we'll be able to maintain this, keep it up to date, use it for advantage. But primarily, we've identified five projects that we foresee over the next 10 years that may need to be completed, and again, these are may, these are not definite, we're not requesting the funds, we're just simply saying that based on the partners that we use to do inspections, the different vendors and our maintenance staff, these are the things that we see that could be an issue. Cranberry Middle School, Freedom Trail, possibly within five years will need a new roof. Riverside Elementary School, within the next five years, also may be in the need of a new roof. Within the next 10 years, Crossmore Elementary is standing in the potential of needing a boiler replacement due to it reaching its end of life cycle. Newland Elementary, the heat pump systems, you know, several years ago, and it's, time gets away from us, and we think, okay, well, that's a new system. Newland's got a geothermal, it's brand new, it's not, it's several years old now, as it was. But, and what you may not realize, and I didn't realize until we got into this really deep, is with that geothermal system, there is an individual unit for each classroom that controls the flow of air, both warm and cold, coming in and out of that. So there's 52 complete or separate units that control the HVAC that's attached to that geothermal system, and those systems have actually exceeded their end of life. So we're actually operating right now on borrowed time, and we're glad and happy that we're operating that way. We don't see today that we need to replace 52 units, thankfully, but we just want to make you aware that within the next 10 years, the majority of those units will probably need to be replaced, and that's one of the biggest fairly expensive systems.
If we're reaching end of life, why would we put that in the 10-year call? Oh, that deal, that'll make your heat pump system. I mean, just a, just a question.
It's, that's about a question, and the units are presently functioning without any issues, and we just, we just chose to put it in the 10-year call rather than the 5-year call.
That's all willing, yes. I just was wondering, maybe we should, maybe something we should think about quicker than 10 years down the road, so I'm saying.
And I would, I would be happy to entertain that, but like I said, the units right now are operating, and I don't want to say too much because, you know, sometimes you just jinx things, but, so when Mike Buchanan and I sat down finalizing the report, that was just the column that they went on, that we chose to go on. And then Riverside Elementary, the chiller at Riverside will be reaching its end of life, potential expiration date in, within the next 10 years. And again, all five of these are just based on, you know, what we know based on normal maintenance cycles, normal maintenance systems, and it could be 20 years before we have reached that critical stage, but we just wanted to bring the information to you. Based on today's cost, and that's what this is, this report does, is you put in the information, it takes today's cost and tells you if you were to have to pay for it today, we're looking at close to $3.4 million. We do know that every year it escalates, cost of living, so it's probably going to be more, but we'll face that when the time comes. Five years ago, when we presented this, you know, Crossmore Elementary was on that report that we'd need a new roof. The HVAC systems, both at Cranberry and Avery Middle, were on that report, and, you know, thankfully, we've seen those three projects through. Crossmore Roof is complete, they are off of the roof, they still act to do the punch list, although they're going to come back. There's a few things where there was some tiles on the inside of the building that did get stained while there was some leaks that took place as the transition from the old roof to the new roof. They plan to do all of the punch list by the end of the month, and then the only thing remaining on that project will be the drainage, that we chose to do a separate contract outside of the roofers. We're going to open that up for our local vendors, and that would be a project that will be completed this summer, next few months, to go in and put the drainage for the downspouts to get the water away from the foundation, but that project has turned out well. So, these reports are handy to have, because when it came time to actually discuss the Crossmore Roof project with you, it was nice to know that we'd already mentioned it, and you all were prepared. It made that process a lot easier on my side of the table, and I hope it did yours as well. Now, the one thing that I want to make you aware of that is not on this report, because this report deals specifically with academic areas, it does not deal with athletics, we are reaching, or have reached, the end of life for the football field turf, and we are presently investigating what it's going to take to replace that system. And the quotes that we have ranging over between $375,000 to $450,000. And then also, the stadium lighting at the football field is in need of replacement. There's nothing wrong with the present lighting, other than the fact that the requirements have changed over time, and the candle output is not sufficient for what the High School Athletic Association requires if we want to have playoff, or host playoff games. We can still play our normal games, both soccer and football, but if we wanted to host the playoffs, after next year, we won't be allowed to unless we upgrade that system. And right now, the only quote that I have on that's $375,000, and I believe that's really out there. So we're stepping back, and hopefully, we're looking at some local vendors who will be able to do that, will keep the money in the county. And so, I just wanted to make you aware of that, because that is not on this report, but that is something that if you'd already heard about, you will be hearing in the next few months.
Do you know the, I know you've got two quotes, and I think they're two different types of turf, am I correct? Yes. Is the difference in the two quotes, I know one's height and type of turf, and what is the different life expectancy, did they tell you that?
I'm not familiar enough with the product to be able to answer the difference in life expectancy. I will be happy to research that and get an answer back to you. But the difference in price is ranging around $40,000 to $50,000.
I think the difference in the height maybe is, in the turf is the difference in the price, but I just wanted to know if there was a difference in life expectancy between the two.
The, as I said, the quote itself doesn't specifically say, the difference in the height, the standard is two inch, and the upgrade is two and four, so it is a little, the actually blade is longer so that you can put more pellets and more rubberization in there. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. This has to be presented, as I said, to both boards, and then Ms. Hicks will need to sign off that it was presented, Mr. Green will sign off as well, and then I have to send that to the State Department for them to put on file, and then in five years, we'll be doing it all over. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them. As always, my office is open to you. We want to strive to have transparent communications between the Board of Ed and the Board of Commissioners, and we do appreciate all that you do. Dr. Rigman sends his well wishes, he is on spring break, he, I was not fortunate enough to be able to take the week off, as he was, and everyone else in the school system. Thank you for letting us come tonight.
I noticed your priorities, of course, the first five years, you have a two, the other is a three, is that on a, like a five-point scale, or how did that, what I'm saying is, if we were to put together, you know, a first, second, third on this, where we have, you have two in the five, just the two, you understand what I'm saying, kind of what?
They are not ranked on the report itself as I presented it, just in my recollection, Cranberry Middle School's roof, it would be a higher priority than Riverside in the five-year section. Within the 10-year section, my personal opinion would be the Newland HVAC system would be the number one priority, simply because that product is already sitting there at the end of its standard life cycle. Crossmore Water would be second, Riverside's would be third, and that's based on age. But again, as far as the 10-year systems, they're all functioning, and Mike is pleased with what we have, he just knows that as a maintenance director, he wants to put that out there, that they are going to receive, or have their age within 10 years.
Kind of like the artificial turf, it was mentioned about three years ago that it was going to have to be, and then one of the superintendents said, that's, don't And then one of the superintendents said, "Just don't bring that up right now. We might can take care of that." So we're going to see if y'all can take care of that. I've not forgot Jeff.
We'll discuss this tonight.
All right.
Thank you all. Thank you, Jeff.
We need to approve this 2021 North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Facility needs. Do I hear a motion that we approve that?
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. And we need, I forgot it first, but just because we're doing this on YouTube and here, we need to identify ourselves, and we'll start with Mr. Blake Vance.
With my driver license. You know, Blake Vance.
Woodhull Young, Jr.
Martha James Hicks.
Tim Phillips.
Dennis Aldridge.
Yellow Bear County Manager.
And we'll recognize our secretary and, all right. And we'll move right along to three point three C, Toho River Regional Hazard Meda- I couldn't say that.
Mitigation.
All right, mitigation. Plan update.
So you have before you a resolution to adopt the 2021 update for the Toho River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Nathan Slaughter, with the department manager, has approved it. FEMA has given their blessing, so the only thing we have left is just to approve the resolution. Do I need to read any of the resolutions aloud? Are there any questions?
Well, we've all had that in our packet since Thursday, and I think we know, but if you want to tell the public a little bit about it.
This is just to make sure that we are ready for any of the hazards that can be out there from weather or any other causes, loss of life, damage to public or private property. And this does involve Avery, McDowell, Mitchell, and Nancy Counties, along with Avery. And it is a multi-jurisdictional meeting, and it has, like I said, it has been passed by FEMA and.
So we adopted this plan, the original plan, we adopted in 2011. We had a plan in 2005, just Avery County, but we got a grant to do a multi-county or regional plan, which worked a lot better. And so it has to be updated every five years, and we updated it again in March of 2016. So we're just on our track of updating. You have to update it every five years so you can get your federal and state funding.
It's messing with my head when you said 2016 was five years ago.
All right.
Time just keeps rolling. It is, I'm like, hey, God.
I need a motion to adopt this.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Mr. Tim Phillips made the motion, and Mr. Vance seconded it. Everyone that's in favor, raise your hand, and we have a full board in favor of that. All right. We'll move right along to, now, did, we didn't have a resolution in that to adopt it.
Yeah.
There is a resolution.
Yes. And that's what we're going to do.
Okay. All right. We want to get all this right. Three point three D, a lease agreement, Aldemar convention site.
You know, this is for our convenience site, for our citizens to use for their trash disposal for Altamont, and this is, again, is an update. I believe we do this update every five years also, and this is probably the best deal we got going. It cost us a dollar. So are there any questions about that lease? And that lease will need to be adopted and signed.
Every ten years.
Every ten years, sorry. Every ten years.
All right. We need to approve this lease. Do I hear a motion that we approve?
And authorize the county manager to sign.
Okay. And to authorize the county manager to sign. You agree with that, Mr. Young?
So moved.
All right. Who will second? Tim Phillips second. All in favor, raise your hand, and we have a full board agreement.
My kids, I'll pay the cost. I think I've got that in my hand.
Pay the extra cents.
Three point three E, resolution to request attorney to levy the occupancy tax.
You have before you a resolution to request the authority to levy occupancy taxes pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute, whereas tourism is a growing industry in Avery County, and the county desires to promote Avery County as a tourism destination, and whereas Avery County previously had authority to levy a room occupancy tax. The Board of Commissioners of Avery County hereby request the North Carolina Legislature authorize the county to levy a room tax up to six percent pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A through 155 and North Carolina General Statute 105-164. This motion to adopt this resolution is made on April 5th, 2021.
All right.
Just clarify for the board, this doesn't set it at six percent, it's just for authority.
I was, excuse me, go ahead. Whenever we get to the floor, I have a question.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the occupancy tax for our Avery County?
So moved.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Dennis Aldridge made the motion to adopt, and Mr. Tim Phillips seconded it. All in favor, raise your hand.
I think Dennis had that discussion on it.
I'm just wondering, do we need specificity in here as to jurisdiction, considering that the cities, the towns?
I think that's picked up by reference in the statutes.
Yeah, I'm checking.
Yeah, I think it's picked up by referring those two statutes.
I just want to make sure we're not infringing or we're putting ourselves in a position where we have to backpedal later on.
No, I think, you know, and this is just to ask the legislature to adopt it, and of course, any legislation that's drafted will be up to the legislative team to draft. This is just saying that the county is interested in having this authority.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the way this works, once we pass this resolution, assuming we do, then it's going to go, we're going to send this to our delegation and they're going to introduce this as legislation in the general assembly, is that correct?
Well, in the legislation, yes, that's correct. But the legislation will just give the county authority to do it. It still has to come back, and the board will have to pass a resolution to actually implement it.
I thought, so just wanted to clarify that and make sure.
So this is step one in a process of probably five steps.
And what I guess I would like to kind of circle back to is, the motion was to adopt an occupancy tax, and I think what you actually may want to do is to modify your motion, and it's actually just a resolution to request the authority to levy an occupancy tax, not to actually establish an occupancy tax.
All right. Dennis made that motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution to request authority to levy occupancy tax.
I'll second that motion.
All right. It has been brought to the floor, and Dennis corrected to request authority to the occupancy tax. And Mr. Phillips seconded that. Everyone that is in favor to adopt, raise your hand. All right. A full board has agreed to that. All right. We'll move right along to three point three F, our Tax Administration Report. Mr. Bruce Daniels.
For opening approval, I would like to submit the collections total for the month of March at six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
I was trying to get my mood up.
There's ways down there.
There's a way, way down there. And the minute I got it on, my computer kicked off.
I'd like to request the board not make me nervous like that.
I'm not sure what we do when they don't.
I don't have enough hair left to donate to the cause, so I appreciate it.
I never ever see what happens when we don't get it to print.
Mr. Daniels, would you please put that figure before, again?
Yes, ma'am. The figure for March is six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Do I hear a second?
They had a second over there. Who seconded that first time?
All right.
Who seconded again?
Yeah, I seconded.
All right. Dennis Aldridge has made the motion to approve, and Mr. Blake Vance has seconded. Oh, Woody has seconded. And everyone that approves, please raise your hand, make it known that we have a full board to approve that.
And just to enlighten the esteemed board as to the numbers where we currently are, as of 2/20 this afternoon, that brings us to ninety-seven point eight-one percent collections on our 2020 taxes. I'm thrilled. If you look at year-to-date, we were only at ninety-six point six percent, ninety-six point six-nine percent last year, so we collected roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars more this year on this date as we did last year. So I am pleased with that number, and I hope that you all are as well, so.
I believe that some of the people in Avery County has used their stimulus check wisely.
We have, we had a large number actually past due taxes that have come in in the last couple of months. We've collected close to eighty thousand dollars in taxes from 2015 forward, so we're actually in pretty good shape. That's, you know, found money really essentially at this point, so hopefully, we can actually continue to receive some of that information in as well, so. But unfortunately, Mr. Young, sometimes with collections do come releases, and this month I do have a total for-year approval of five hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have Mr. Vance move to approve, and Mr. Woody Hall Young seconded it. And everyone on the board, how do you vote?
Roll call. Dennis Aldridge votes aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Martha Hicks aye.
Woody Young aye. Blake Vance aye.
All right.
As you can see from the sales numbers before you, the market is still, shall we say, robust. For the month of March, we had ninety-four qualified sales. Year, last year for March, we only had forty-four. So it's, it's still going at an unbelievable pace as far as the speed with which properties are moving. We're trying our best to keep up. As you can see, we're at eighty-one percent, which is just right in line with where we have been, just showing that our appraisal is out of date. Unfortunately, this last year has really put us up against the wall as far as what the numbers are doing. We're having to redo a lot of work that we had hoped was behind us, but the sales prices that are being generated over the last nine months have really been an extra burden to what we're having to do, because we're having to go back and redo two years' worth of work in six months' time. So we're trying our best to stay in front of it, we're trying our best to stay with it, but the market is making it a little difficult at this point in time. But there we are. Any questions about sales or collections or anything at that point? And as far as the applications for the Board of Equalization and Review, do I need to reread those names, or are we?
Please read the names.
I certainly will. We have Ms. Edith DeeDee Traver, we have Mr. Clay Patrick Dale, we have Mr. Moses Brazel, we have Ms. Amy Vaughn, and we have Mr. Samuel Woody for your approval.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Mr. Aldridge, how do you vote?
Aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Martha Hicks aye.
Woody Young aye. Blake Vance aye.
All right. We have full board voting for that.
Yes, Chairman and Vice Chair, if you possibly could, please.
All right. Do I hear a nomination for the chair?
Having Ms. Traver being chair here recently.
Yes.
I nominate her.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Aldridge, what's your vote for that?
Dennis Aldridge aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Martha James Hicks aye.
Woody Young aye.
Blake Vance aye.
All right.
We're fairly lucky to have Ms. Traver still with us.
Yes, we are.
She is, she is phenomenal. She absolutely really is. She's, she's an outstanding individual.
Now, who is the vice? Do you have a vice chair?
It is up to you. Mr. Dale has been, he is the ranking, Mr. Dale or Mr. Brazel are the ranking members as far as time served on there, so either one of them would be an excellent choice. Really, any of the four remaining would make wonderful choices, simply because they have varied experiences, and I would have no issue with any of the four.
Okay.
I'll make Pat Dale.
Second, Pat.
All right. Mr. Woody Young nominated Pat Dale, and Mr. Aldridge, I believe, seconded that. All in favor, let's raise our hand. All right. We have a full board.
You've got to pay attention, man.
I switch around on them every once in a while. I think they dullen so little, so they have to stay on their toes.
Thank you all very much. I genuinely appreciate y'all working with us and having patience with me, and so thank you all very much for the confidence that you show in me in my office. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it for you.
You're brilliant, ma'am.
Well, guess what? Three point four A, our county manager.
I apologize now. So it'll be okay. First thing, I'm going to go out of order, but first thing I want to do, as you all are aware, Melinda Pebble found another job and will no longer be working with the chamber, but Ann Winkleman will be taking her place, and Ann is here in the audience, and we appreciate her time and effort, and she's picking up right where Melinda left off, and we thank you for being here today.
Nice to meet you.
Can you tell us your name one more time? I'm sorry.
Ann Winkleman.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
And I'll be having lunch with Ann, and I'll go ahead and talk about this with our broadband grant with ARC. Michelle and I have a meeting, and we hope we got some good applications in for that hundred thousand dollar matching grant from the ARC to help expand broadband in the county. So that is tomorrow, Wednesday. Wednesday. We will have that lunch meeting, and then we will have our first meeting to start looking through the applications later.
Any other news on broadband source?
We do, we are working. The attorney's got some leases in her office. We're working with Skyline SkyVest on some leases for some fiber build-out in the county. Two of those buildings will go on school property, two of those will go on county property, one adjacent to the ball field here. I'm sorry, three, three places for that. And the other news is, the American Rescue Plan and the governor's plans with some of that money, he has made a push for the state. He has made a, uh, push, uh, for the state to help expand broadband with some of that American Rescue Plan monies that are coming in. Uh, I have been on the phone with Mr. Green and our Senator Daniel, uh, about the need. We still have need in this county and it takes money to expand broadband. So, uh, I will keep you posted. Uh, if y'all have the opportunity to push, anybody from Raleigh, um, because they'll talk a lot about expanding broadband, but it does take money in order to do so.
And I'd like it to be made known, Mr. Manager, that our county cannot put money into doing the broadband.
We cannot own the infrastructure for broadband, so.
A lot of people, even though we mentioned that, you still go into meetings and people say, well, why don't y'all get broadband? Why don't you put money into it? Well, they won't let, that's why.
In two thousand and eleven, Phil, if I may ask, I think it was the eleventh or twelfth, did Yancey County not receive about twelve million dollars?
They, they received a little more than twelve million dollars to expand broadband through their county. Yes, they did.
What did we get?
We received C-Bro.
What? Our rating?
Was it tiered?
Oh, did we?
Did we apply?
I don't think we applied.
I don't think we applied.
I don't think we applied, do you? So we're behind the eight ball on that and, and that's the reason why.
The county has, and Mitchell County both have broadband available, about ninety percent of their homes are on it.
Yeah. What we gotta, what we've got to do is get reliable and not just Band-Aids, and it's gotta be affordable. That, that is the key.
Not all affordable.
And it's not affordable. And, and, and speaking with one of the companies that we all know that has broadband in our county, there is not any more juice to push any more broadband from their current structure. They would have to spend millions of dollars, like tens of millions of dollars to, to upgrade to be able to expand any more services in our county. So, but we are working on it and we are pushing. We saw, we just need help to push.
Your, your, your cam wasn't too big. Let me open one. We went toward a facility at Barnesville and gave them permission to come into Avery County. Have they ever crossed county lines?
Country cable.
Country cable vision?
They are at Franklin Town.
They did. They come a little.
They're in Franklin Town and they did come to a certain campground on nineteen N. But that was because the investor paid for it out of his pocket account. So they are there. Um, and I talked to them on a bi-monthly basis at least and just said, any, any, any changes, anything you can do for it.
I, I, I guess Martha was the only one that was there for that besides me and Cindy herself. I, I certainly got the impression when we went that they were.
Wanting to come.
Yeah.
What I've learned in pushing for broadband three, four years now is everybody will talk. But, you know, I need to see a dollar from the state. You know, Warren Daniels said, what's it gonna take? I said, it's gonna take money. Uh, they gotta have money in order to expand broadband and make it reliable and make it affordable.
Well, we, uh, the grant that we were looking at this year that was put on the.
On hold.
On hold was, we were able to leverage that money to, um, match with providers. Is there any discussion or have, have you got any, uh, guide and chat onto this American Recovery Act money? Is, would it be able to be leveraged in the same way?
I, I, I do believe that it will be a match from the company. Uh, it just won't be, oh, here's money, you know, this is what you gotta do. Because if they could live making the gain, I think.
Well, and I, I think that what I'm saying is I think that mechanism.
Right.
Doubles the, the impact if we're able to put it in as a, as a leveraged dollar as opposed to a spent dollar.
I've talked to Phil True, Michelle Ball with High Country Council of Governments. When some of this money starts rolling in, when and if, uh, and we're still in this talking phase about all this. Um, you know, they had a press conference, but we still don't have any rules and, uh, about the help that they can provide us with writing these grants, taking care of these grants. And, uh, because there's tons of paperwork with, with that type of matching grant.
I don't understand. While AT&T or Southern Bell or whatever you wanna call it, it already has the infrastructure to nearly every home in the county. Doesn't have the.
Beautiful.
Well, the infrastructure's there. The poles are there, the lines are. Why in the world couldn't they came, come in and, and, and stream off of their fiber network, which they already have most everywhere in the county, and then drop into every home? I don't, I mean, I don't understand that concept.
I don't, I don't understand.
They don't want to.
And I have an article I can forward to you. Uh, AT&T is lobbying right now against expanding broadband to rural areas, and I would be glad to forward that article to you. They say that rural areas have sufficient broadband speeds or internet speeds from what's here already.
And our schoolchildren can prove them wrong.
I would be glad to forward that.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. They're fighting against that infrastructure too because they're moving toward, uh, AT&T especially is focused on wireless technology.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but mean for rural North Carolina, which mostly North Carolina is rural.
It'll be, you know, it's about forty.
Yeah, I mean, and the, and the bottom line is their, their infrastructure is into every home, because most homes have, probably, at some time.
There are businesses on nineteen N where there's not reliable internet that can pay a lot of money per month and get reliable internet in their business. But it's just, I, it's just unaffordable. It is not affordable for the, for most of our mom and pop up there.
I, I know, I know a business on nineteen N that pays about five hundred dollars a month for internet.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Um, that company you mentioned frustrates the manager a whole lot.
I could tell you why.
It, it, it's a lot of frustration.
And Mr. Vance, when we went down there and looked, they showed us in the building that everything was already there. And they had to plug it in.
Yeah, that's just how easy, I mean.
That's their.
They certainly gave us the impression that they were ready to go.
The only thing that, uh, uh, the, the wiring stuff had only come down to Mayland and then they went a little farther and.
They were running to Bethel. They want, Bethel was wanting. They were running to Bethel.
But they wasn't a thing they had to do, but just plug us in. That's really.
Because I mean, yeah. But we, I, I certainly think we are, uh, misled about.
I think we did too, because I've looked every time I've went down to Spruce Farm and I don't see them laying anything. All right, we.
I'm not finished. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm flinging till you have two things.
I know, but I lied.
All right.
Write it down. Well, we're being honest about lying. I'm honest. Okay, so let's talk about COVID just a second. Um, as of today, uh, fifty-nine active cases in our county. Uh, to put that in perspective, Mitchell and Yancey have twenty-six and twenty-one. Um, so I just ask the citizens, let, let's still be careful. Uh, I know we're getting, we're doing great on vaccines. We've got thirty point six percent of our population vaccinated at this time. Um, put that in comparison with Mitchell at twenty-three point eight, Yancey at twenty-eight point seven, even Watauga at twenty-seven point three. So, very proud of our team, uh, for what they've done on vaccines. It is slowing down. Uh, we do have first dose vaccines available for this week. Uh, so anyone knows anyone, they can call the seven three three eight two seven three between nine and four. Uh, Monday through Thursday this week can get an appointment. There's also a waiting list. We need fifty people to sign up for the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. So we're working on that list at this time so we can get fifty for that. So, uh, anybody that wants a vaccine, we will be able to do that. But, uh, I think with us reaching that thirty percent, because the whole state average is right at thirty-five percent. Um, couple of other things. In your agenda consent, uh, there is a transportation si- system safety plan. Uh, this is an annual update, again, just like some of the other things that we have done today. So that'll be passed with the agenda consent. In your information items, Paul Buchanan, our emergency manager, we are now certified storm ready. Um, that helps, we had to improve our emergency first response and planning for a natural disaster. And again, thanks for the ag building, which we have nicknamed the Bat Cave because of that facility and where we can store the, the, uh, things that we will need for these emergencies. We were able to reach that certification, so that's great. There is in your information items, Grandfather Mountain Highland Games will be July eighth through the twelfth. Uh, we hope by July, things are even better with the COVID. Diane Creek has give her blessing and she did want me to make sure that I said masks are still an important part of any function. So, uh, that, that's from our health director. Uh, Avery Senior Center, uh, there's some information in your informational items about reopening for programs. We're not ready to reopen for sit-down meals together, but we are going to reopen for programs soon. Uh, Parks and Rec, we had thirty-five individuals in our Little League football. Little League baseball sign-ups were this weekend and that was at the Ag Center, so that was another great time. They were able to spread out and do their paperwork in there. They had the drive-through Easter egg, uh, hunt, uh, this weekend and we do, uh, plan to open the pool.
I have questions about that.
Following all the C D C guidelines.
How, how do you do a drive-through Easter egg hunt?
You just get an Easter basket with all the goodies and, and you win. Everybody won.
That, that confused me greatly.
Yeah, it, it's hard to have an Easter egg hunt in your car, but, uh, the Easter bunny was there and, uh, they gave, everybody, everybody got an Easter basket. Uh, Dennis and I didn't go to, but we watched the High Country Council of Governments Virtual Legislation Day. Uh, we had Virginia Fox and Tom Tillis. Warren Daniel was part of it. Dudley Green was part of it. Um, had a, had a day to do that. I wanna thank Jesse Pope and everyone, but Jesse really got the ball rolling on our litter sweep. And yes, I have called DOT today, left a message because no one answered the phone about when we are going to get our litter, litter sweep, uh, from the government. It's supposed to be the first week of April. I'm gonna count this. It's the first full week of April, so I expect them to be out there this week. I will be going to the Kiwanis meeting tomorrow to do a presentation on bragging on the county. And I think that's it.
I'd like to correct our manager on one thing. Uh, we got in a habit of calling our center, Ag Building Center, and we have named our center as Avery County Community Center. And we need to let the papers know that, that we have named our community center Avery Community Center.
Avery Community.
Yeah.
Oh, I do have one more thing.
One head. I know that when I turn that light on, it'd never go out.
So, uh, with BiHealth, if you all remember several months ago, um, our adult crisis telemedicine care, that will be next Tuesday. We will be up and running and trained, April thirteenth. So this is something we, they've worked on and worked on and worked on. So, um, April thirteenth, we should be up and running. We'll be the first county in the BiHealth district to have the adult crisis center in each, in every sheriff's vehicle. So that will be a great help for that, uh, crisis. Now, I'll hush. Thank you.
And I did watch the meeting at my homes that are coming up here and watching it with the.
The, the. High Country Council of Governments. Yes.
And we did have a Avery Transportation Meeting down at the Forest Service and Caleb was there with us and we had a real good meeting.
It was.
Uh, for the county's transportation. And I'd like to let that be known. We stayed about all day, didn't we?
Yeah.
All right. We're having some good reports. Three point four B, our finance officer's report.
Good afternoon, board. Uh, I'll give you just a brief update before I present the items for your consideration. Uh, we, Mr. Philip and myself have met with all the department heads concerning the budget and we've been working to compile all that material and hopefully we'll have it for your, uh, at your fingertips within the next couple of weeks so y'all can review the budget packets. Uh, I have a few items here for your consideration. I'll start with item one. Uh, Avery County has received a grant in the amount of six hundred dollars from the Avery County Farm Bureau to provide lunches and supplies for people helping with the COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic. Request the board to, uh, adopt the following budget amendment to debit supplies, uh, General Fund Line Item forty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred, six hundred dollars and to credit donations, General Fund Line Item thirty-three, forty-five, six hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion that we approve?
Somebody.
Second.
All right, Mr. Vance made the motion, Mr. Aldridge seconded. Everyone that's in favor, uh, raise your hand.
Stand on your head.
We got a full board. So, we wanna really thank all these people that have given donations to buy food for our COVID clinics out there because we've got a lot of people that works there. And, uh, Mr. Manager, make sure and send each one a.
Hand written. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, echo your sentiments. I, I think it just shows what great a county we live in, that we're a community. We reach out and we help each other. We see a need and we don't just wait for somebody else to.
If you're unsolicited, I'll.
Yeah, we didn't even ask.
Please let us help out while we can. Where you at?
And speaking of, item number two, uh, is another grant this county has received in the amount of three hundred dollars from Josh Anthony Insurance Services to provide, also to provide lunches and supplies for people helping with the COVID-nineteen vaccination. And request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit, uh, supplies, General Fund Line Item forty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred, three hundred dollars and to credit donations, General Fund Line Item, uh, thirty-three, forty-five, also three hundred dollars.
All right. All right, do I hear a second? We've already got a motion on the floor. All right, Tim Phillips made the motion and Dennis Aldridge seconded. Mr. Blake Vance, how do you vote?
Blake Vance votes aye.
How do you vote, Mr. Woody Hall Young Junior?
Woody Hall Young Junior votes aye.
Martha James Hicks votes aye.
Tim Phillips aye.
Dennis Aldridge aye.
All right, we've got a full board on that.
Item number three, the Avery County Sheriff's Office has received a reimbursement from the, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners liability and property pool for the purchase of three brush guards for their trucks. Um, request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay, General Fund Line Item fifty-one hundred, seventy-four hundred in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars and to credit law enforcement support, General Fund Line Item thirty-six, sixteen, fifteen hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion that we, um, accept the fifteen hundred dollars from reimbursement from the NCACC liability and prop- property pool for the purchase of the brush guards?
So moved. Second.
All right. Mr. Mr. Vance made the motion and, uh, Mr. Tim Phillips seconded that. All in favor, raise your hand. We have a full board on that.
Thank you.
Item number four is also another reimbursement, uh, that the Avery County Sheriff's Office has received for the NCACC workers' compensation pool for the purchase of three bulletproof vests. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay equipment, General Fund Line Item fifty-one hundred, seventy-four ten, and to credit law enforcement support, General Fund thirty-six, sixteen, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Dennis Aldridge made the motion and, uh, Mr. Blake Vance seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we have a full board on that.
Thank you. Uh, the last item I have for your consideration, item number five, and I'll give a little bit of, uh, brief information into this. Due to the increased revenues that the sheriff's office has received, uh, increased concealed carry permits has been up drastically over the last year and, um, they're, they're still seeing the increase. And they're still seeing the increase coming in from all the people coming out. Not just getting new concealed carry permits, but also renewing their concealed carry permits. And this is a expense, but it's also of course a revenue. We received, I believe it's ninety dollars for new concealed carry permits and eighty dollars for renewals. The county retains half of that amount. And the other half is expense to the state. And so we are reaching our limits. We're actually over and if you look at the bottom of your report there, I have the actual totals that we have. And so you can see we're already over on concealed weapon permits expense line item. And we budgeted twenty-five thousand in revenues and we're at thirty-four thousand. And so I request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit concealed weapon permits, General Fund Line Item fifty-one hundred, fifty-seven twenty in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. And to credit concealed weapons fees, General Fund Line Item thirty-six, thirteen, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All right. All right, Mr. Aldridge made the motion to approve and Tim Phillips second.
Let me ask a question.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry. I don't completely understand what you just said.
I apologize.
No, not your fault. We're taking money out of the general fund.
We're not taking money out of the general fund. We're debiting the expense line item in the sheriff's office, but we're crediting their revenue side. So we're allowing for more revenue to come in and allowing for more expenses to be made out. So right now, when the sheriff goes to put in his payment to the state, his purchase order is put on hold because there's insufficient funds budgeted in that line item. So it's not, we're receiving additional expenses, but we're also receiving additional revenue.
Money in, money out.
It's money in, money out.
And the revenues were above what was expected.
Exactly. Which pushes expenses above what we expect.
So to keep that auditor happy, we need to do this.
All right, how does the board vote? Everyone, please raise your hand. That's a full board agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
That item speaks to the state of our society, I think.
And we don't, I don't need to brag on Caleb, but he's going to be one great finance officer. So thank you, board. And thank you, Caleb.
Thank you all. I look forward to working with y'all on the budget process. And thank y'all for still in the trust you have in me. Appreciate it. It's been a great process and just everybody's just fantastic to work with.
Bring it in or we'll stay all night.
We know you really don't mean that about the budget.
We're all idiots. Just going to mail casino things.
I well warn the board, Mr. Boyd didn't say much about it, but the two officers that they are hiring, it's going to be, our part is three thousand dollars. It costs nine thousand dollars to get them.
Twenty thousand additional in total.
So we just want to warn you ahead of time, so you don't.
I'm not just a proper place, but I don't know that it ain't needed. I think so.
I think so too. Because the two men that were doing security could not carry a concealed weapon. So they're going to have to do the training as well as the others.
I know some people say, well, there's adults down there and there's teenagers down there. But the bottom line is, they need to be safe too.
Yeah, they do. And if somebody walks in with guns, what good is the security office if he don't have guns?
It's not worth a dime.
So I just wanted, that was in the meeting we had and I'm on that board and I wanted to.
Yeah, I've been contacted about that one, so.
Can I entertain any more questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right, we'll move right along to three point four C, County Attorney's Report. Michelle.
Just to update the board on the one sixty D process. Where we're at as far as the timeline goes is the consultant is working on those ordinances. We have one last ordinance to review and get to him. The plan is to have those revised ordinances submitted to the planning board at their last meeting in April. And then after that, for it to come to the commissioners, we'll have to have a public hearing after it's been reviewed by the planning board. And then we should be on schedule to get everything approved by the July first deadline.
All right.
Again, we're finding these are statutory as opposed to substantive changes. If I'm speaking, yes.
Is that all you have?
That's the only thing I have unless the board has any questions about that process or anything else.
All right, we'll move right along to three point five, our staff reports and requests. We have anything there, Mr. Manager?
We do not, ma'am chairman.
All right, three point six, closed session. Ms. Michelle, do we have something to discuss in the closing?
Yes, we have one matter to discuss in the closing session.
All right, and this would come in under attorney clerk privileges?
Yes.
All right, it would be G point S one four three dash three one eight point one one A three. And we invite our board, our county manager, our secretary and clerk to our closed session. All right. The motion and Mr. Dennis Aldridge seconded. I would like to ask Blake Vance how he votes.
In exceedingly reluctant, aye.
All right. Mr. Woody Hall Young, how do you vote?
Woody Young, a little aye.
Martha James Hicks votes aye.
Tim Phillips votes aye.
Dennis Aldridge, aye.
All right. We have a complete board agreement. Okay. We'll go to three point seven. The approval of the minutes for February the eighth, two thousand twenty-one board workshop, and March the first, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I approve.
All right.
Second.
Mr. Woody Hall Young made the motion to approve and Mr. Tim Phillips second. Everyone that's in favor of the minutes, please raise your hand. We have a full board agreement. All right. Three point eight. Our agenda consent items, we've had those and our manager brought out some specific things in the agenda consent items. Does everyone agree by consent for these items to be approved? All right. Three point ten. Our upcoming meeting.
We start two meetings next week.
Yeah, we do. We start two meetings in May. Now, we've got a workshop scheduled for when?
Twenty ninth.
All right.
Two o'clock.
At two o'clock. And we probably will stay a long time, so be prepared.
So, the next, and then we have one for the sixth of May. That budget workshop starts at five and that's with the fire commission, the sheriff, and the board of education. And then the next one will be the thirteenth of May and it'll start at two. Then if we need an ex, if we, if we still haven't finished, we can do our, you know, replace our regular meeting with a budget workshop. We'll just have to have a notice ahead of time so I can notice that out.
So, we're only meeting one time before the meeting was the big three?
Uh, yes.
We've had these meetings. Cindy gave us a copy of them in one of our packets.
Yeah, in the board workshop.
Yeah.
But we, we've been doing that the past couple of times.
And we plan on giving you the notebooks early.
Yes.
I talked to our manager today and they looked set as quick as they could to get all of our department heads' budget on paper and they would give us a copy as soon as possible so we can have that studied. And that's going to help a lot. But we've got a lot in the budget workshops that I have to discuss. All right. Three point eleven. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So who?
Do I hear a second?
Second, third.
Okay.
No, this one's, Cindy, we need to sign some papers you said for.
Yeah, we, we don't want you to run off. We've got some papers that need.
We just don't want for everybody to sign.